The time has come for the regular city council meeting Tuesday, January 22nd, 2019. Row call please.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seeger.
Present.
Alderman Mosio. Alderman Vialobos. Alderman Nusen.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Balko.
Present.
Alderman Taylor. Mayor Cunningham.
President. Can we all please stand as Pastor Arthur J. Gass Senior leads us in the invocation. And after that, we'll have our guests coming lead us in the pledges. Pastor Gass?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council members for the invitation to open this January 22nd, 2019 session of the City of Waukegan Council Meeting with an invocation. Shall we pray, Father God in heaven, in the name of thy Son Jesus Christ, who is Lord of the universe and Savior of every soul who receives and believes in him as their Lord and Savior. We ask, on this memorial and celebratory weekend of remembering that neither the son of the state of Georgia, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., that you help us to recall by way of your Spirit his courage to confront all levels of injustice using a strategy of nonviolence and how he used his voice to speak for the least of these, your children. We pray for each council member as well as legislators at the state and national level to always keep at heart what's in the best interest of their communities they serve when decisions are made to remove the personal effect. Father, we are aware that you know all of our deeds, and nothing can be hid from you, but we have sinned against thee and against one another. Therefore, Lord, we ask, as a city, state, and nation, that you not remember our sins. Please forgive and remove all of our transgressions and let them blow in the wind as far as the east is from the west to be remembered no more. We ask that you use all of us, whether a leader or a follower, use us as a vessel. Let us shine like a burning candle in a room, that you may be glorified and edified in this dark and sinful world. For all the citizens and businesses and organizations of Waukegan, beat them with beat and with hope, as they look to the hills which is you, which cometh, I help, knowing that all of my help comes from you. Be so careful to give you all the praise and glory. We ask these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ, and the people of God said. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Gass. Item C, Mayor's Comments. Again, good evening, everyone, and welcome. I wanted to start off by expressing my condolences. And those of the entire city of Waukegan community, to the family of the young man who fell into Lake Michigan last Friday. The Waukegan community is mourning with you and your families. I also want to send our condolences out to the Soto family, Ruben and Tony, regarding the passing of their mother. For those who are not known, from Soto Furniture, Ms. Soto passed away this week. I will put out, if we get information about their services, it's tomorrow, it's tomorrow, Wednesday, I think. Okay, tomorrow at 6:00 to 8:00 visitation. Peterson Patch right here on Sherden Road next to you, McDonald's. Snowplow. I want to extend a huge shout-out to Public Works for their hand and work and the hard work clearing the snow and really taking care of the streets, from the main drags to the many main drags to the side streets. They did a phenomenal job considering how much fell and the time in which it fell. So, Mike, I think he left already, he's already out in the streets. So, to Mike Hewitt and to his team, congratulations, and we thank you for the hard work. To that point, Public, please abide by the snow ordinance and move the vehicles off the street. The chief and I have spoken, that means police chief, and Public Works director, we will be out ticketing, and if necessary, we will be towing cars. We simply gotta move these cars off the streets. Alderman, we're gonna be bringing some pictures to you to see what the Public Works drivers are going through. We have cars parked on both sides of the street on some of our most narrow areas. We need your help. We must, we simply must move these cars. When you're talking about eight and nine inches of snow dropping within two or three hours, it becomes impossible. And we certainly do not want to hit any vehicle with these trucks. So, please, help us out. Additionally, we've received several complaints in the mayor's office, I'm pretty sure Alderman had two, about the shoveling of snow on sidewalks. We have an ordinance, talking to our building commissioner, our code enforcement department. We simply don't want to have to do this, but from the complaints that we're getting, and more importantly with around our school areas, these young kids are walking in the streets. We need your help. This is not the route we should be taking. This is something that everyone just, this should be automatic, shoveling, you know, the snow in front of the sidewalk. And if you do that, putting it in the streets where the plows just come really doesn't help. You have your parkways, you know, your backyard, I don't know how, but, I mean, we have, typically everybody has a parkway, they can put this snow on their parkway.
Front yard.
Front yard, whatever it may be, but putting it back right into the street kind of defeats the purpose. All right? So, we're asking, I'm begging, do this together, Public Works, community. It works. If not, we have to go to that other measure, which is ticketing in our snow areas, and if cars are sitting there over two or three days, I want to make sure, is it three days sitting there, DC? They're sitting there without, if you haven't moved in the three days, we will hit a tag to tow. Gonna be aggressive on that. Internet sales. As a reminder, the Waukegan Police Department's front desk at door five on West Street side of the building is a safe place for internet purchase exchanges. You can come to the police department so you don't fall into a couple of situations we've had early on where someone has basically been, you know, robbed. So, please, utilize our Waukegan Police Department as a place to do them. Upcoming events. The biggest tribute experience in Las Vegas, Purple Rain, comes to Genesee Theater on Saturday, January 26th, followed by popular videos tribute, Band American English, and Abba Mania on Friday, February 1st. Tickets are available at Genesee Theater, box office, online. Lake County Tech Hub hosts a Pitch Night, How to Create a Business, correction, How to Create a Budget for Your Business Tomorrow, January 23rd. This event is free and open to individuals considering going into business, small business owners and entrepreneurs. Three Brothers Theater and Ravine Media hosting all-day, all-ages Winter Punk and Metal Fest on Saturday, January 26th, at the theater's downstage location at 115 North Genesee Street. The Music Fest features 10 bands starting at 1:00 PM. You got 10 bands of metal, 10 bands? Okay. All the welcome. Waukegan Library hosts their second annual Breaking Bread, a community meal on Sunday, January 27th. The meal starts the library Black History Month celebration, and includes discussion about justice, support for students and young adults, and successful strategies for our community. Jackie Robinson presentation. I would like to call up Ms. Harleen Shipley to talk about an evening of monologues, Black History Month events in early February. Ms. Shipley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and audience members. Ooh, my voice sounds so big, huh? The city of Waukegan and the Waukegan Park District have partnered to present an evening of monologues in celebration of Black History Month. The event will take place on Friday, February 8th, and Saturday, February 9th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM at the Jagminis Center of the Performing Arts in Bowen Park. The tickets are $20, and all proceeds will go to support the Artish Yancy HBCU Tour. Come see and hear many important figures in American history, like retired educator and local historian Sylvia England.
This train is bound for glory, this train. My name is Amenta Ross, but you, and you probably know me as Carrie Tuck. I want you to come to the Jagminis Center for the night of monologues.
Clearview Elementary School Principal David Hill, Daniel Hill as Fairgood Marshall.
I made clear my argument to the Board of Education, to the Supreme Court, and Brown Board of Education, that separate but equal was unconstitutional and had no place in our society.
Waukegan High School College and Career Director Evanda Fulton as Serena Williams.
I believe I can do the best, I can achieve the best. I'm 37 years old, and I still ain't finished yet. I gotta leave in a few minutes because I'm about to pay 524 grand slam with you tonight at the All-Star and the Open at 8:00 PM.
And our own mayor as Jackie Robinson.
There is not an American in this country free until every one of us is free.
Tickets are available for purchase at the Park Place Senior Center located at the Kareem Rose Belvedere Park. Everyone involved is donating their time for this worthy cause. Thank you and hope to see you there.
Well, that was a surprise. Thank you very much.
That's great.
What a great way to advertise, huh?
Yeah.
I love it. All right. Washington Street presentation. As everyone knows, the Washington Street project has been a tremendous undertaking by the city of Waukegan. It was a huge infrastructure improvement that was only possible because we had undertaken a capital improvement plan and had bond money. We hope to use that bond money for new improvements, but instead, we used it for an emergency, which is why investing in our future, investing in our infrastructure is so important, so we don't have to have these emergencies, you don't have to have these emergencies nonetheless. For those that did not see the city's recent social media post, I am proud to let everyone know that the city of Waukegan was awarded the American Public Works Association Lake Branch Emergency Construction Repair Award for 2019. Mr. David Motley is now coming to come up and speak about the awards a little bit. David?
So, keeping with the acting theme. Tonight, I'm standing in for Mr. Greg Summers. He is the Lake Branch American Public Works Association Director, and he's also Director of Development Services for the village of Barrington. He was interested in driving all this way, but he had to drive through the onslaught of the approaching storm and then make his way back home to Arlington Heights, and we feared not a good idea. So, I'm serving in his capacity today. So, again, this is a letter from Greg Summers. He was going to deliver this himself, but here we go. Good evening, my name is Greg Summers, and I am President of the Lake Branch of the American Public Works Association and Director of Development Services for the village of Barrington. The American Public Works Association, APWA, was formed in 1937 and serves public works employees with a worldwide membership of more than 30,000 professionals across the United States and Canada. APWA includes not only personnel from local, county, state, and federal agencies, but also private sector personnel who supply products and services. As a comprehensive public works resource, the APWA is a non-for-profit 501(c)(3) organization and prides itself on its ability to provide varied educational networking opportunities that help public works personnel to grow in their professionalism and directly impact the quality of life in all communities they serve. Among the most important functions that we serve are providing scholarships to college students, continuing education students, and then recognizing public works professionals for outstanding accomplishments. The Lake Branch of the Chicago APWA chapter has an awards committee comprised of five industry professionals in both public and private sector who are experienced in all aspects of engineering, design, permitting, and project implementation. Annually, the Lake Branch of the Chicago APWA chapter recognizes projects that better our environment, initiate new technical innovations, and enhance service delivery. Among those awards are outstanding responses to emergency situations. While no community ever wants to be backed into an emergency situation, the reality is that much of our critical infrastructure goes unseen on a daily basis, and needs for repair sometimes emerge without notice. Today, I'm pleased to recognize the city of Waukegan for their emergency response to the Washington Street culvert repair. The awards committee was impressed by the speed and response and sensitivity to the community for a repair that impacted a main thoroughfare with an average daily traffic of 20,000 vehicles per day. Roadblocks and detour routes were established immediately, and pedestrian routing during this blockage was given thoughtful consideration. The project was further complicated by the presence of an AT&amp;T fiber optic line, which was exposed by the collapse, and had to be immediately supported to avoid disconnecting service from all customers between downtown Waukegan and Gurnee Mills. The solution was to replace a 1904 stone arch at a depth of 45 feet with a new 10-foot diameter precast pipe and head wall. Instant coordination with the Lake County Stormwater Management and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers was required to do the work within federally regulated waters. Bypassing pumping on a massive scale was required to free up work zone for safe construction processes. A project of this scale typically will spend more than a year in planning and another full season in construction. This emergency project was implemented by your staff and contractors in only two months. Your staff did an amazing job completing this work expeditiously in order to reopen Washington Street to critical traffic and pedestrian needs without compromising water quality, environmental regulations, or safety at any time. This project is truly worthy of the APWA's Emergency Construction Repair Award for 2019. Thank you for your time, and especially to your staff for their timely and professional response to your city's needs. Mike Hewitt and staff, glad they accepted this award, and I'll pass it to Alderman to see. And also in that packet that I gave you is basically the slideshow that we had presented at the awards ceremony. Five slides, very succinctly understanding the whole issue and the depth and width of the whole. Thank you.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Seeger, to seat Alderman Mosio, all those in favor.
Aye.
Last but not least, for Mayor's comments, I'd like to send a shout-out to treasurer John and Suzie Schwab for their 50th wedding anniversary. So, you guys get a chance to say a 50 years of marriage. Congratulations. Other than that, next on the agenda is, okay, oh, motion by Alderman Mace, second by Alderman Mosio, to approve the regular meeting minutes from Monday, January 7th, 2017. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item three, audience time. Madam Kirk.
Okay, we have, first on the list is Joyce Evans. We have three minutes and no profanity. Not from you.
Not.
Okay, you're good.
My name is Joyce Evans, 8/29, my house in Waukegan. Anyhow, in the past, I have been going to the hotel, just trying to get some peaceful sleep. My money ran out. I started sleeping in my car for the last two years. That's even no longer to keep going. So, I decided to go to the chief, who I thought I had a good relationship with, but it seems like that kind of feeling. When I had the meeting with the chief, I think the chief probably said maybe 15 words. There were three other men there. And the problem that really ate me up is because Flor, he did all the talking, like I was three years old. I wish you guys, somebody would get the tape of that meeting, watch it, how he talked to me like I was just a blank nothing, and that really ticked me off. My thing is here, to me, you don't even have a three-year-old education, because anytime you say somebody is homeless, homeless people don't pick up your case. I got a phone call from the barroom house saying that they want to speak to Joyce Evans because she was homeless, and the city of Waukegan called them, and they were trying to get a place to stay because she was homeless. That is ridiculous. The reason I started sleeping in my car is because I can't get any rest, I can't get a sleep, and like I told you before, the dog, the house behind me, the dog had been there three years, they got him quieted out, he started back up, it's just not a livable place. Number two is, like, the second thing is that, the reason I went that route is because a lot of the police, not a lot of them, some of them, when they come down there, they don't want to do loud music because they said they don't have that kind of time, that time could be spent anywhere else. If it's a ordinance, it's worth doing. Then I gotta argue with them, get the shift commander on the phone, just for the shift commander to tell them that she's right. My thing is here, they don't want to write those tickets because they don't want to work hard. But if it's a job, either it's a job or either it's a check. And I have to agree with the person that says politicians and babies have the same thing in common, they need change and often.
Thank you. Eugenia, Eugenia Briscoe, and Yashir Phillips.
Good evening. It's Eugenia. Hi, how are you?
How you doing?
Good. It's Eugenia Briscoe. So, I'm just here to inform this body of a coalition that I started in about September of last year, and the coalition is called hashtag Just Do It underscore Vote. I, in this community, there is a lack of voting for millennials. My focus is to get the millennials to vote. As a result of that, we put together via pod, social media information to get the millennials to come out to vote for the midterms. We have data to show that for parts of North Chicago and parts of Waukegan, the numbers increased, and we would like to say it is a result of what we're doing in the community. Right now, the millennials outnumber the baby boomers. However, we know that the challenges and the issues that millennials have is different than what we have. They speak a different language, and what they're about as far as, I'm a baby boomer, it's different. And so, I have put together a group of millennials, it's myself and two others as far as advisors, but then I have put together a group of millennials that are out in the community, and our goal and our mission is to get millennials to vote. We don't represent a specific Democrat or Republican, we just want to get the millennials to vote. So, we have put together, we're putting together an event, we actually put together events, as I said, for the midterms, and we're going to continue that. Our goal is to focus on local elections and then ultimately for 2020. That's what we're going to do. We are going to be out here. So, I just wanted to inform this body, we have an event that's coming up, and my right arm, who is connected with the millennials, who works with the body of millennials, I've asked her to tell you about the event that's up and coming.
Before you go, would that be, is that two for one, or just give her, what's your name?
Yashen.
All right, we're gonna put that for you, so you can do another three minutes. If not, you'd be tacked on, is that okay? So, you're a second person speaking.
Well, thank you so much, it's a pleasure to be here this evening with all of you. So, as my aunt stated, yes, my name is Yashen Inchworm, Inchworm is my nickname. Yashen Inchworm from Inchworm Entertainment LLC. Right here in Lake County, I have my own podcast where I interview people within the community, political figures. I'll be reaching out to you, Mayor, I got your card. You'll be on the show very soon. But I interview political figures, musicians, artists, all different sorts of people who are doing positive things right here in the Lake County community. As of right now, this is the way to reach millennials, through social media. So, my aunt, as she said, she reached out to me to put together a group of really motivated millennials who have, we've came together to really put in the efforts to get millennials out to vote. That list of people or the other members of the coalition is Andrew Gadson, he does so many amazing things out here in the community. Phil Meyer Sr., Brandon Ewing, who was just honored yesterday at the Martin Luther King Dreamers Breakfast, Vance Wyatt, and Anton Matthews, who's, he's definitely out there, I'm sure you all know his, I'm sure you all know who he is. But we have worked together, we've been meeting, we've spoken at focus groups within the community, and we're very passionate about what we're doing here. So, we've gotten, so as my aunt stated, February 7th, at Stretch's Sports Bar and Grill, the group, the hashtag Just Do It underscore Vote Coalition will be there, and we have gotten a great response from a lot of the Aldermen, and we are working extremely hard to get as many millennials out there so that you all can, so that all of us can be connected. That is the point of this meeting, and I am really excited about it. At the end of the day, I know some people may overlook the millennials, but we have so much power, we're out here doing things, and our votes matter, so we might as well come together and make change. So, it's a pleasure speaking in front of you, to all of you this evening. I hope to see you at, on February 7th, I'm sorry, February 7th, at Stretch's Sports Bar and Grill, there's gonna be, we have so many great things for you planned, so 200 North Green Bay Road from 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM. Make sure you are there, and if you know a millennial, please invite them, this is for the community. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Esther Herron.
My name is Esther Herron, I am a resident in Waukegan. I would like to talk today about the bus stop in winter in Waukegan. Some buses stopping Waukegan were eliminated, and pedestrians like me, we have to walk long distances in extreme weather condition, and we're supposed to walk no more than two blocks. I had the same, I had talked about this last year, the same. For example, this was a colorful flyer in Chicago in the bus stop that was so nice, and they say how to plow the street and the sidewalks, because the sidewalks in public buildings in Waukegan are plowed, others not at all, and the ones that are plowed are done in closed loops. The corners are not clean, and pedestrians have to jump. It's surprising to me, for me to see, for example, a commune plowing an avenue and behind two or three more commune doing nothing. This extra commune could be sent to clean alleys and secondary streets. Full travelers prefer to walk on the street, or they have to jump the amount of snow in the corner. And we are, like I said last year, we are no horses or racing cars, walking in circles. On Sheridan Road, if the main street, a bus stop... On Sheridan Road, if the main street, a bus stop, and we had to wait up to one hour for the next bus, walking back and forth because we can see the number of the bus because the, the last one blocked the number of the previous one. The Sheridan Road was no plowed for years, but last year was the first time and thank you. But this year again, is not really properly plowed, is in circles again. And in order to take the seven buses that stopped there, we had to jump almost three feet of snow. There is no way to take the bus without jumping. And the appearance in Waukegan is really important. And I would like to ask Mr. Cunningham to organize this service in winter for pedestrians, it's not only for cars. How do you expect people from other cities or the naval personnel come to Waukegan to visit? And there are no walkable streets, insufficient parking spaces and inconvenient public transportation. I appreciate if you organize a little more the service and thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Carrasco.
Um, tonight, um, I want to alert our community about something that I consider very un-American that's going on here in the city of Waukegan. Um, for the past four years, uh, the unions have been taking a beating here in the state of Illinois. Hopefully that will change. The unions for generations have been providing good paying jobs, strong middle class, fought for social security, health benefits, overtime pay, paid vacations, but most important, protection for workers. Uh, perhaps some people do not know the history and the life of yesterday being Martin Luther King. Um, he worked in conjunction with the number one Mexican-American leader, Cesar Chavez, in the 1920s. Cesar Chavez was known for his efforts to gain better working conditions for all the farmworkers and started the United Farm Workers, um, Organization, Union. So let's look at the city of Waukegan. And the 43 non-union jobs that have been created under the mayor of Waukegan, according to the information that I've been provided. So let's just do the math. Non-union jobs, 43 new hires at $60 a month, you know, the union fees, times 12 months, that's $30,000, nine hundred and sixty dollars that the unions have missed out on. Times four years that the mayor's in office. So that means that the unions have missed out on $123,840 during his term. So tonight, I just want to shout out to all the unions, open your eyes to what's going on here in the city of Waukegan. Because in my opinion, not one of those positions should not have been a union job. There's no reason why they were categorized, come on, we know how the game is played, as non-union, okay? So, very un-American, in my opinion. Thank you very much.
Before we go there, Ms. Carrasco, that's, that's for public, right? Can I get this, we can bring that an official document for our city clerks? Yes, yes ma'am.
Absolutely, no problem.
Can I have that, thank you ma'am.
This is based on information that you provided.
Okay, so this is a, this is your official, okay, thank you ma'am.
By your own city workers.
Thank you ma'am.
I'm sorry, we're going to move on. Um, the last one would be Mr. Clyde McLemone, please.
The law is what.
Good evening. Good evening, council members, how's everybody? I hope everybody was there for this snow. It's snowing real bad out there, I want everybody to be safe. I'm not here to fight, I'm not here to curse. How you doing, Mayor? Anyway, uh, Black Lives Matter is sponsoring a skating party on, uh, February the 16th. That is Black History Month, that's a Saturday. You know, and I wanted to do something different. We wanted to get the children away from the phones, from the video games, go back to skating and stuff. You'd be surprised how many of these young people, millennials, don't know how to skate. Because we don't have no more skating rings and stuff like that. But anyway, we, uh, as the founder, we're gonna sponsor a space, uh, skate day, which is February 16th, it's free admission, free skates, can't nobody beat free. And we're gonna try to have free transportation, which we do have a couple of buses. And we're gonna have, uh, free lunches. We're gonna feed you. We want the whole family, this is a unity day, even though it's sponsored by Black Lives Matter, we ask that all races come out. It's a unity day. This will be held, uh, February 16th, like I said, 825 Sacramento Avenue in Racine, Wisconsin. If anybody's interested in going, please contact me, my phone number is 847-344-2540. Or you can, uh, uh, reach out to Vance Wyatt, and I'm pretty sure some of y'all know how to get in touch with Vance on the North Chicago side. Buses will be at the Waukegan East School. We're gonna load up there at 3:30 and we're gonna go out from 3:30 to 6:30. And we're gonna skate and we're gonna break some legs and have some fun. Yes, I do have, uh, sheets for parents to sign if their children go and they get hurt, we're not responsible. We're gonna have some fun, y'all, nobody's gonna get hurt for real. Just adults, thank you for letting me share.
Now Clyde, real skaters, with stoppers or without stoppers? There you go. I know that's right. Thank you, thank you for that, yeah. That used to be a weekly deal for just about everybody in Waukegan at the Zion Roller Rink.
Zion Roller Rink.
Zion Roller Rink, starting at six.
Yeah.
If you had stoppers, you skated on the inside. I'm sorry, on the outside. If you did not have stoppers, you skated on the inside, that means you were pretty good at, at roller skating on Sunday. All right, thank you. Oh yeah, I forgot about Magic City, Magic City? Well, that's kind of post-us. The, the one was Zion, now that's, I can truly remember that, my, my kids did that one. But thank you, thank you, we're, we're, much success with that, all right? All right, here we go. Uh, proclamation. Motion by Alderman Morsio, second by Alderman News, correction, second by Alderman Tempest, and I'm going with the education thing here of course, everybody, for the Great Waukegan Pink Out Week, January 21 through 27, 2019. If I'm not mistaken, the kids, the kids, the teams are playing today, the Pink Out game, correct?
The girls today.
The girls today.
The boys tomorrow, right?
Yep.
I'm a little messed up with my dates.
The game is tomorrow?
I, I do have my Pink Out t-shirt. I won't be able to wear it because I won't be at the game, but, uh, you can attend the games, it's really fun. It's really a fun time to attend, uh, our boys' basketball and girls' basketball games for the, the Pink Out. All right, we got a motion on the floor. Any questions to the motion? Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Villalobos, to approve the monthly church report. Any questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. I think we might have something here.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you speak that? No, no, I thought you, David was bringing somebody else to speak, I apologize. All right, everybody, due to the weather conditions outside, we're gonna, we're gonna go to, it's called an omnibus. An omnibus, uh, vote simply means on each, on each one of our items six, seven, and eight, we're gonna take all the men into one vote. We will read those items out. However, it would be, it would, when we say yes, we're gonna say yes to those items on six, seven, and eight. Uh, to read the items out would be the various committee chairmans of each and every last one of the, the various committees. All right. Item six being the Finance Committee, Alderman Valco.
Thank you, sir. I'll make a motion, the omnibus, A, B, C, D, E, skipping F, which we held over, and do G. So A through E, and then G is an omnibus, sir.
Okay, and that's for finance. We're gonna go with Public Works, same thing. There's a motion on the floor, I'm gonna put a second, with Alderman Morsio. We're gonna go through all of the omnibus items, then go for the vote for the, uh, the omnibus, then the actual vote for the items. Everybody's fine on that. Alderman Newsom.
You want me to?
Just, just for you, ma'am.
Should we put on the omnibus?
I didn't read it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
So we have to vote on, whether we're gonna do the omnibus first.
We're gonna vote on the omnibus, okay. So it's a motion and a second. Uh, any questions to the motion? All those in favor for the omnibus vote?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried, we don't need a roll call, do we? All right, so now there's an omnibus, now we're gonna move to item six, then to Public Works Chairman of Seven and Public Works Chairman of Eight. Alderman Valco.
Thank you, sir. Item A, a motion to approve an ordinance amending Division Two to Chapter Two, Article Six of the City of Waukegan, Illinois Code of Ordinances Related to Purchasing Policies. This item was titled at the December 17th, 2018 Finance Committee Meeting. Item B, a motion to correct amount approved by the City Council on December 17th, 2018 to award a joint contract with Baxter and Woodman Bowler LLC from a not-to-exceed amount of $4,170,000 to the correct amount of $4,187,000. All other terms and conditions remain as previously approved. Item C, a motion to authorize the proper city officials to make formal application for a grant requiring the disbursement of reimbursable funds and/or a local match requirement with the U.S. EPA for the purpose of brown field cleanup. The execution of any grant agreement and/or intergovernmental agreement must return to City Council for further authorization and approval. Item D, a motion to approve a change order to the fiscal year 2018-19 citywide office supplies and paper purchasing contract with Office Plus Solutions and Supply of Waukegan, Illinois, under the Cooperative Purchasing Network, otherwise known as the TCPN, from a not-to-exceed amount of $40,000 to revised not-to-exceed amount of $65,000 charged to various budget codes. Uh, item E, a motion to approve purchasing authority not to exceed $35,000 with Air One for SCBA equipment and maintenance for the May 1st, 2018, to April 30th, 2019 fiscal year by granting a good faith waiver per Section Two dash 458 subsection I, subsection seven, and funding is from various line items. We are, we held over item F. Item G is a motion to authorize the proper city officials to execute a reimbursement agreement with Waukegan Custard LLC pursuant to Section 16 dash two and for the purpose of the recovery of public monies expended relative to the furtherance of private developer economic development proposals, including costs and expenses incurred due to the application of incentives, subsidies, and other approvals or relief from the city, and I so move.
Item seven, Public Works Committee. Item A, motion to authorize the proper city officials to approve change order number three in the amount of $621,903.93 with Cabanel and Sons for the completion, which will continue in the spring of repairs relative to the Washington Street Culvert collapse and ancillary work necessary to be performed, bringing the revised contract amount to $2,486,903.93. The contract was originally approved on October 1st, 2018 in the amount of 1.765 million. And change order number two was approved on October 15th, 2018 in the amount of $100,000 relative to the related Water Street Culvert. Funding from 2018 Geo Bond Funds, line item 307-130727706. Item B, motion to authorize the proper city officials to approve purchasing authority in excess of $20,000 with Certified Fleet Services Incorporated by granting a good faith waiver per Section Two dash 458 subsection I, subsection seven. Once needed repairs are approved, the city will be in excess of $20,000. And it is estimated that the approximate total of $23,000 will be spent with Certified Fleet Services Incorporated with vehicle, with vehicle maintenance, parts, repairs, and inspections. Funds currently charged to line item 10910525474. Item C, motion to authorize the proper city officials to approve, uh, purchasing authority in excess of $20,000 to Benell Industries Incorporated by granting a good faith waiver per Section Two dash 458 subsection I, subsection seven. It is estimated that an approximate amount of $29,000 will be spent with Benell Industries Incorporated for vehicle maintenance, parts, and equipment. Funds currently charged to line item 10910525474. Item D, motion to authorize the proper city officials to approve change order number one to Bowler Construction, reducing the original approved contract of $1,869,500. Approved by City Council on October 15th, 2018 to a new amount of $822,200 relative to a reduction in the scope of, of work and of funds being charged to line item 307-130726367 from Waukegan 2018 B Geo Bonds. Item E, motion to authorize the proper city officials to approve change order number one to C Oba, C Oba, for an additional $50,000, bringing the total to $150,000. C Oba did the engineering for the emergency repairs to Washington Street Culvert replacement. Funds to be charged to line item 228-922-824435, and I so move.
Mayor, can I just, I have a question really quick. Um, what we just voted on was for the omnibus of just the Finance Committee or the omnibus of all three committees?
All three committees.
Alderman Valco's motion just specifically stated Finance. It didn't, it wasn't stated as Public Works and everything else.
No, I made it, I, I said all three committees, sir. I did, I said all three committees.
Okay.
Okay.
Because I did have questions about two items on Public Works, but I guess.
And you have, you still have a chance, you're gonna have a chance to do that.
Okay.
We're just getting them out right now, okay? All right, item eight, since you took the committee.
Uh, Insurance Committee. Item A, motion to, motion authorizing proper city officials to settle building department workers' compensation claim, see 645 dash 17 dash 10305 dash 01, for a total of $23,000. Item B, motion authorizing the proper city officials to expend up to $48,298.60 on public works department property claim, see 645 dash 18 dash 10403 dash 10, and I so move.
Okay, we have a, we have a, a, a motion on the floor for the omnibus. Now, all of those items on the omnibus have been read. Now, any questions to any of those items on the omnibus? If so, all the Villalobos, did you have, where are we going? Let us know specifically, sir.
So, item A for Public Works Committee.
Uh, item A, Public Works, okay.
I had a question. Mike Hill was supposed to get us, try to get some information for us prior to this vote happening, if it's possible.
List of questions.
Uh, well, I was looking through the, I, I pointed out that in the invoices, there's these line items that say plus 35% of a certain value, plus 10% of value, and then also statements of plus 15%, and then just there's a value. And so I was questioning, where do those values come from? Why was the plus 35 added on? Why was the plus 10% added? Because it wasn't clear in the invoice to me, so I was looking for clarification on that because I was not comfortable voting on this without having that clarification.
Yeah, I, since Mike had grown up the Public Works in order to make sure the streets stay clear and be staged for that, he asked me to respond for it.
Okay.
The 15% that you're looking at there is the profit and overhead on the time and materials contract. Essentially, what happens in a time and materials contract is the contractor gives, uh, gives the city a rundown, a complete rundown of what it actually cost them. And then in order to meet their, you know, pay their office staff and, uh, pay their insurance and carrying costs and especially since this particular contract, uh, they expend, they paid out quite a bit of money and, uh, before they were reimbursed for it, so there were some carrying costs on there. That's all contained within that 15%. It was a standard term in T and M contracts.
Okay. All right, thank you for that information and clarification, that's immensely helpful for me. And then, um, I did actually, uh, I brought this up also during. And then, I did actually, I brought this up also during committee, for item E, the change order for the extra $50,000, and I was asking, I was actually requesting to get some information there. The detailed information we have is not detailed, like, it just says a change order, like, due to emergency. So, the attached item for that agenda item is Chiobra Change Order E1, and the description just says, a change PO due to Washington Street emergency, but there's no detail as to what the work was done by Chiobra or anything like that, so I was requesting that we get that information before we actually place this vote. I'm not saying, I'm not saying we shouldn't pay them, what I'm saying is I want the details, because I don't want us to...
Well, sir, I'll get those details for you, but let's move on to that, and before anything is cut, I'll direct the Finance Department to make sure you have that before I do, okay?
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and just to that question, when they initially came out, they just started, we always said that these, the cost initially came out could change.
Right.
So, and I'll get those, I'll get those to you, but before anything is cut, we'll make sure that...
Yeah, like I said, I'm not in disagreement of pain with it, I'm just wanting, I just want that detail, so should a resident ask me, well, it was $50,000 more, what was it for exactly? I can actually give an answer, like, that's my concern, and so that's...
I can almost, I can help you with the answer to any, believe me.
Of course, of course, I know, it was a big project, I mean, we received a war for it, so I mean, the work was done, it was done well, so I do appreciate and recognize that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions to the motion? All right, just to be clear, we are voting on item six, seven, and eight, all of the items in it, with the exception of item F and Finance, is that correct, Alderman?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
All right, items nine and 10, motion by, correction, official order amended, most by Alderman May, second by Alderman Tempest, to authorize proper city officials to adopt as presented ordinance amending prohibited parking on North Avenue, that issue has been resolved, correct, Alderman? All right, any questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Items 10, we get omnibus, that's two, motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Bolton to omnibus items 10, A, B, C, and D, any questions to that?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Seager to approve, motion to approve regular payroll dated January 18th, 2019, a total amount of $1,523,811.69, to approve PBOC Holiday Back, Buy Back Payroll dated January 18th, 2018, a total amount of $3,803.
2019.
Correction, 2019. Motion to approve elected officials' monthly expense account and civil service stipend payroll dated January 18th, 2019, in a total amount of $7,016.66. Motion to approve vendor payments dated January 21st, 2019, a total amount of $1,276,579.49. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Item 11, there being none, items 12, closing remarks, Alderman's time, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Bolton.
Pass.
Alderman Seager.
I'd just like to remind the public, please slow these cars down. The crews are out there plowing the snow. Move the cars as we ask, as the mayor's asked. And just be careful, drive safety. Thank you very much.
Alderman Moseo.
Pass.
Alderman Villalobos.
Yeah, just a little, one or two things really quick. I just want to mention, I was, for those who aren't aware, there was Waukegan Chamber of Commerce, dozen after-hours events to promote networking amongst businesses. Also, they are starting a pilot program of business-to-business, kind of member-to-member discounts, and so currently they have a couple of businesses that are offering this, so if you are a business owner in Waukegan and are not a member of the Chamber, you might want to consider joining onto the Chamber of Commerce, and then as well as potentially to help get business-to-business economics going, participate in the member-to-member program for the Chamber of Commerce. Just want to mention also that I had the privilege to attend the Waukegan Township's Martin Luther King Drummers Breakfast yesterday. As usual, they put out a wonderful event, it was great to see everyone there. Some of our state electives, our municipal electives, our federal electives were there, many wonderful people, and so I just wanted to give kudos to the Waukegan Township for the event and hosting that annually, and that's actually it tonight, thank you so much.
Alderman Newsom.
Pass.
Alderman Tempest.
Yes.
Alderman May.
I'll be really fast, we're all talking about snow, and we had some complaints at a major apartment complex in the Seventh Ward, Harbor Lakes, and the next day they came out, and I saw five people clearing, because they have all this land on Sunset and then down Elmwood, so just a huge shout-out to that apartment complex for coming out and accommodating the neighborhood so we don't have to walk on the busy street, and that's all I have, thanks.
Alderman Valco.
Thank you, ma'am, quickly, two things. Route 561, the Castle Crest Bus going from Macquarie, there's been a service change effective yesterday. To improve during the PM school rush hour, the following trips are being adjusted and the revised schedules are shown below. The southbound trip currently scheduled to depart Newcastle and Edgewood at 3:00 PM is being adjusted, it will now depart two minutes later. The current northbound 3:20 PM B trip no longer will be operated as a standalone trip. Passengers should ride the southbound D trip instead. So if you take that B trip, make sure you adjust your ways to get around through downtown. It serves Waukegan High School, Washington Campus via Jackson, Washington, and then Sheridan Road at 3:20. The second thing is that I have, I went to a function last Thursday, actually it was a Waukegan Chamber of Commerce event, and I met a young lady who's been speaking at the podium before, Kathy Green, who is the Community Relations Manager for Oak Street Health. And she came up to me and she said, Bill, you know we're having trouble getting people over there at Oak Street Health. Patients, she says, can you help? And I said, Kathy, how can you have problems? It's people 65 and over that are on Medicare, while they say that they have no money, it's free. I don't have a doctor, they provide you with one. I don't have transportation, we'll bring you there, so you have no excuse whatsoever. If you know somebody that's on Medicare, has got health problems, wants to see a doctor, Oak Street Health, 3210 Grand Avenue, 847-220-4103, 220-4103, 32 Grand Avenue, it's free, anybody on Medicare, that's all I have.
All right, motion by Alderman Villalobos, second by Alderman May to adjourn all those in favor. All right, motion's passed and carried, hey, Dana.